This evening, I count in heaven and the Father, we come to you, thank you for this day. Again, thank you for waking us up this morning, watching over us, bringing us to this point in the day. We ask that you bless and, and the hearts of each and every one of our citizens and the hearts and minds of each and every one of our council people as we conduct this meeting tonight, and we ask that you watch over our great Chester County. These and all other things, I ask in your son Jesus' name, I pray. Amen.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Guy. Before we go to, uh, with our minutes, uh, I got a couple of things we need to do here. Uh, first of all, under nine P, under general, we gonna have to strike that one.
Nine D.
Nine D.
D.
D. Is that correct? All right.
D is in Delta.
D is in Dog.
D.
All right, at this time here, I'd like to make a presentation. All right, Ms. Lee has retired after twenty-one years with Chester County. She served in several departments, in her last department was clerk of council, and you served there since seventeen.
Twenty sixteen.
Twenty sixteen. So, I'd like to present this plaque to Ms. Karen Lee, and thank you for your twenty-one year service of Chester County, for your dedication and, uh, to, to the Chester County, and also to Chester County Council.
Well, thank you very much. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, just let's recognize she did return here on her day off to help us.
As always, she does her best to go above and beyond the call of duty, so thank you, Ms. Lee, for that. All righty, moving right along now to the approval of the minutes for January the sixteenth of, uh, twenty twenty-four, the council minutes. Need a motion on that?
I'll make a motion, we approve January sixteenth, twenty twenty-four, council minutes.
All right.
Second.
Second, got a motion and a second on that. Uh, all in favor, raise your right, oh, is any discussion on it? Any discussion, all in favor, raise your right hand and say aye.
Aye.
Everybody.
Aye.
Okay, all right, for, uh, also, we had minutes for February the second, twenty twenty-four, special call minute. Uh, need a motion on that?
Second.
All right, Mr. Vaughn made the motion, need a second?
Second.
Need a got a motion and a second, any discussion on those? Was everybody in attendance for that?
I wasn't here.
You wasn't here, so, God, again, so, all in favor, raise your right hand and say aye?
Aye.
All voted aye, except Mr. Keegan, that he did not attend that meeting. Okay, under citizens' comments, we'll go ahead and start with the citizens' comments, start with, uh, Mr. John Massey.
John Massey, one seventy-one, East Lacy Street. I'm here representing the remembrance of all veterans. These two hundred and fifty-plus county veterans and their families, their likenesses being shown, few of their war experiences told in this twenty-three-page book of fame photograph you've got. Due to my activism over the past last decade plus the present day, I've alienated and will alienate important people. Big fish in a small pond. It's just a price doing business. Don't turn your back on a good idea, reason being, you just don't like the messenger. Flip side, I've also learned that very few of these same people belong to these same groups, some of the best, most caring people I will most likely ever know, true public servant. Cut to the chase, hear about what to do at the memorial building, the changes to be made. Receive depictions, photos, various ideas by email of the current thinking, lobby, wall murals and graphics, depictions of various wars, photos, videos, I take issue with some of this, the only permanent wall decorations that should be seen, photographs of men and women, like you have, who earned the right to be on those walls. One or two large flat-screen TVs could take care of the rest. Murals painted on canvas, displayed Veterans Day Memorial Day, then there's this, Operation Remember, Veterans and Veterans Family Remembrance Program conceived first in Texas, too involved to get, get into here, what I'm asking for, is an individual or group face-to-face meeting with all who are willing to talk about, take a look at this, uh, alternate and less costly, far more meaningful to most people, simple plan, simple enough plan, and listen, see this for yourself, then decide. Ignore me if you like, I will not allow you to ignore those I brought with me. You can contact me by email, information, time and date, meeting will take place here, local news media invited. A no answer is an answer, remember that.
Thank you, Mr. Massey. All right, moving along to, uh, for the rezoning, uh, speak against the rezoning, we got, uh, Mr. Stephen Person.
Stephen Person, retired Army, seven forty-four Spirit Circle. I'm here in reference to the Fernwood, uh, request to rezone to RG two. I'm against it, um, as is my wife, also a veteran. We own a piece of property that would have been on Fernwood had the contractors not had to go down over twelve feet to find Hardpan. So, our house ended up on Spirit Circle at the corner of Fernwood, and we own approximately a hundred and eighty feet of the road along Fernwood, which has only one shallow ditch. And we're concerned about the fact that this gentleman who purchased this property could have built a house under RG, RS one without a problem, but he's asking for RG two, which means possibly, um, fabricated property like trailers or simple houses, which we, we don't think would fit there. That and the fact that the property would be deeply submerged in water, we have another couple here who have property next to that, and like my yard, I had to put in a, a ditch all the way around my yard and my house, just to keep the water from going under my house at six inches deep when it comes down the hill. There's no good sewage there that would run the water off, and anything that's built could very well end up being washed away in a heavy rain, example, a hurricane or a severe tropical storm. But the main thing is, we're, we're not interested in seeing a fabricated, uh, type house or trailer, or any of the other things that he's authorized to put in under RG two. It would take our property value down considerably. We spent quite a bit of money putting in a one thousand, uh, six hundred and eighty square foot, uh, house with a garage and two driveways, and we combined two lots to put this together, and they were both on Fernwood. Uh, that's essentially it. We're just concerned about the quality and the type of property and what type of housing he's going to put there. The road is only sixteen feet wide, and you have to park on the road if you own property along that road, and it is a dead-end road, which is in bad need of state repair. I realize it's a state road, but it's cracked down the middle, and at certain spots at the top, we're near the dead end, it's already sinking into the, the ground. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Person. All right, Stephen Fairfax.
My name's Stephen Fairfax, I live at six oh eight Fernwood Drive. Um, I'm under the impression that they're wanting to put in mobile homes, four of them. There may be fifty yards between my house and the far house, and if they do, they'll have to put them in long ways, which to me just looks like a mini trailer park. We, a year ago, refinanced our home, just, it needed upgrades, but it brought the value of my home up, and I know if they put in mobile homes, all it's gonna do is bring the value of my home down. All the water from the road up runs down to my yard, the state won't fix the drainage, so it runs down to my yard and then my neighbor's yard behind me, and I know that if they do that, they're gonna have to raise that land, and it's gonna make the drainage of my yard worse. Thank y'all.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Fairfax. All righty, now we go to number five, we open up the, uh, public hearing. Under the, this will be the third reading of the twenty twenty-four dash one to amend the ordinance that created the burnt Meeting House Cemetery Advisory Committee and to adopt this enabling act to be named or renamed the Chester County Historical Cemetery Association. Uh, not the, uh, advisory committee, excuse me, the Historical Cemetery Advisory Committee. So, uh, anyone want to speak to that?
I'll make a motion, we approve the third reading of twenty twenty-four dash one.
Second.
Well, we gonna have to, this is just a public hearing, Mr. Vaughn.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No one wants to speak to that, so, at this time, uh, we'll close the public hearing and move on to ordinance of resolutions and proclamations, which would be the third reading of twenty twenty-four dash one to amend the ordinance to create the burnt Meeting House Cemetery Advisory Committee and to adopt this enabling act to be renamed to the Chester County Historical Cemetery Advisory Committee. I need a motion on that for the third.
I'll make a motion, we approve the third reading of twenty twenty-four dash one.
All right, need a second?
Second.
Got a motion and a second, any, any discussion or comments on that? All right, hear none, all in favor, raise your right hand and say aye.
Aye.
Vaughn, unanimous vote, thank you. All right, moving to P, under six, is the first reading of twenty twenty-four dash two, amending ordinance of twenty, uh, twenty-one dash eight to adopt the county's general fund balance policy and to provide for other related matters. Need a motion on that?
I'll make a motion, we, uh, approve.
Second.
The, uh, first reading of twenty twenty-four dash two.
I'll second.
Second, all right, now, uh, got a motion and a second, is any, uh, any comment?
It's Mr. Darby, I'm sorry.
Yeah, Mr. Hester is who I was gonna point, point to, to give us a little background on this.
So, thank you. So, basically, this, the rewriting of this ordinance, we're rescinding the old fund balance policy and adopting the new fund balance policy, um, notwithstanding, um, any changes other than, um, creating the capital reserve, um, fund. And so, if you go to page four of four, I'm not sure what page it is on your.
Page twenty.
Um, it starts on page twenty, so if you go through that document, and you actually go through to the exhibit A, which is a general fund, fund balance, and I'm just gonna take you right to the changes. So, it says the county may access unassigned, if you go down to the bottom under eight, um, second paragraph, may access unassigned fund balance with enactment of an ordinance, including amendment, county, uh, including amendment to the county budget, unassigned fund balance twenty-five percent, um, projected the maximum level for the, so that's your minimum, the maximum is fifty, that's something that was already established, and now what we're saying, if the fund balance exceeds fifty percent, then without further action, the county council, county treasurer, by, so no further action by county council, so adopting this, uh, ordinance change, that the treasurer shall, uh, take the overage above that fifty percent, and will create that capital project fund as discussed, um, back in the fall of last year, after, after the budget, if everyone remembers that. Everyone on board there so far? And so, that's the end of really the change here. Basically, the only other thing I would, would add to that is you don't have to vote on that every year, this will carry in full force until county repeals it, um, by ordinance.
Is Mr. Darby gonna speak to this? I'm, I'm fine with it, I just wanna hear it out of his mouth at some particular point in time. Because he's the one that created the fund balance.
He, Mr. Darby was gonna try to be here tonight, but he could not be here, but Mr. Darby and I talked extensively, him and I worked on this document together, I spoke to him, we've worked out all the kinks and the different wordings of it together with Mr. Kozlarik, so, um, if, if you, you would like to verify, um, that what I'm telling you is true, um.
That's not, that's not, that's not the question, the treasurer is the person that's responsible for the money, and I think citizens ought to hear his input, that's my only, that's my only.
This is, this is first reading, this is first reading, so we've got two more readings, so we've got time.
You got two more readings, so that, uh, maybe Mr. Darby will be here to.
You can't do it in title only, if you'd like to, Mr. Chairman.
Well, I'm, I'm good with taking the first reading, I mean, I think everybody's good with that. No, any further comment? Okay, if none, uh, like to vote on the first reading for the twenty twenty-four for amendment to ordinance, raise your right hand and say aye.
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 Unanimous vote, Mr. Vaughn voted also. All right, moving to C, the first reading of twenty twenty-four dash three, uh, providing for the allocation of fees, fees received from development agreements, uh, project agreements and other similar arrangements entered into by the county and one or more developers, and providing for other related matters. Need a motion on that?
I make a motion, we approve the first reading of twenty twenty-four dash three, providing for the allocation of fees received from the development agreements.
All right, you got a second?
Second.
Second, all right, got a motion and a second, if we have any, uh, discussion on that. Mr.?
Yes.
Would you like to elaborate on that?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, yeah, if, uh, we can get our administrator to elaborate for the public's sake, I appreciate it.
So, again, this is the ordinance that I agreed, uh, council asked me to create regarding developmental fees, uh, that are coming into Chester County from building and, uh, from the planned developments, and so, basically, this, uh, if you go, the, the real primary part of this, um, take out the legal jargon, goes to section one, allocation of developmental agreement revenue, and says the county allocates one hundred percent of each payment actually received by the county as a result of a development, developmental agreement to a special fund to be held by the county treasurer called the developmental fee fund. And I'll come back to how that'll work, the county shall use the amount held in developmental fee fund to provide financing for costs arising out of or relating to the development of public facilities and/or services in the same general geographic area in which the project giving rise to the payment is located, except that expenditure for law enforcement and emergency service as presumed to be necessary on a countywide basis, and I can explain it further if, if you'd like, and provided however, the county is not required to use the amount held in the developmental fee fund for the same purpose for which the funds were collected under developmental fee agreement. So, let me go backwards, unless that developmental agreement, agreement said it's gonna be used to buy A, B, and C, you don't have to use it to buy A, B, and C, right? And then backing up, uh, to law enforcement and emergency services, it's presumed that if you add deputies, um, no matter, uh, that are gonna service growing population in a certain area, it doesn't necessarily mean that that deputy has to be placed in that area. Um, and then, uh, basically says that, uh, the funds, um, will be tracked and give rise to, um, are, are used for a project in the area that, uh, payment, uh, get, that gave rise to that fund. So, I think we took everything that was discussed and kind of what council had communicated, uh, we're gonna use it for infrastructure, basically, is what we're saying, and for growth in the area that it was received, but it gives county, uh, council the option to, um, kind of look at that a little bit broader scope and to make decisions where you're not really defined, uh, in a tight box with that. The second question you might have is, um, I did get a list, and I can, I'll have to find it here in a second, but, um, I've got a list of which, uh, subdivisions are providing what coming up in the near future, um, but, Mr. Leviser's department, um, and we've already spoke about this, his department, they'll code those fees as they come in, they'll go to the treasurer's office, they'll be put in a fund, so with a journal entry, they'll go in, and then they'll be subcategorized by journal entry into, um, the specific districts and areas that they're in, so we'll track the money is what, what basically we're saying, and then, um, you guys will be able to, we'll provide you with all the data before making any expenditures as they arise.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir. Any further discussion or question? Hear none, all in favor of, uh, approving, uh, twenty, twenty-four dash three for the allocation of funds received from development agreements, raise your right hand and say aye.
Aye.
Vaughn's also. All right, moving to D, the first reading of twenty twenty-four dash four, to amend chapter two, administration, article four, officers and employees, division five, county attorney of the code of the ordinance of Chester, uh, of the county of Chester, South Carolina, to provide for the position of county, uh, attorney and other related matters. Need a motion on that?
I make a motion, we approve, uh, first reading of twenty twenty-four dash four to amend the chapter two for the administration of article four, officers and employees, division five, county attorney.
All right.
I'll second.
I got a motion and a second, any comment on that?
Yes, I would like for our county attorney and, uh, to, uh, speak to this also for the public's sake.
Me, the county attorney.
I'm not our county attorney, county administrator, I'm sorry. Attorney's on my.
Wanna be clear. Uh, again, I'll be very brief on this one, but it's an update to our ordinance regarding county attorney, it replaces, um, supervisor with administrative form of government, it, uh, revises who the county attorney reports to and who, uh, is responsible for hiring, uh, the county attorney.
Thank you for that, sir.
The, uh, when it gets down to that division five, is that a progression where the, the status of the job says, uh, for officers, employees, and division five? What is that?
I see it, uh, that may be, thank you for catching that, that may be, unless that's the, I don't think that's the class of employee, that doesn't sound right, I'll have to see exactly what that is.
That would, that would.
Unless that's some, something, Mr. John Marshall's not sure what it is either, we'll correct, we'll correct that.
All right, all right.
Thank you for pointing that out.
All right.
Out of curiosity, is the county attorney in, in the proposal gonna be a county employee?
You mean, you mean going forward in the future, Mr. AG?
I'm sorry.
I'm going forward in the future.
Okay.
Uh, what, what I'm saying, is that what you're asking?
Yes.
So, so, again, I think that's where, uh, as we're, over the next month or so, um, we look at, uh, what suits county best, it could be a contract situation like we're doing now, or it could be a full-time county employee, and I think we're looking at all options.
Okay.
Uh, no, we're looking at all options.
Thank you.
All right, any further discussion, comments? Hear none, all in favor of, uh, the first reading of twenty twenty-four dash four, raise your right hand and say aye.
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 Vaughn, unanimous vote, Mr. Vaughn also. Okay, moving along to E, the first reading of twenty twenty-four dash five, providing for the allocation of fund held, uh, in the county's capital project fund and providing for other related matters. Need a motion on that?
I move that we approve the first reading of twenty twenty-four dash five.
Second. Need a second?
I'll second.
Second from, uh, Mr. Keegan down there, all right, any discussion of comments on that?
Mr. Hester? I'll, I'll take that one again, please. Um, so, again, and this, I was looking to see if Mr. Darby was here yet, but I don't think he's gonna make it, he was trying to make it back, um, from, from somewhere he had to be, but, uh, this really just follows up the, um, twenty twenty-two, or I'm sorry, twenty twenty-four dash two, and, um, is an ordinance stating how we will allocate those funds that are held in that capital project fund, and so, um, I, I'll try to explain it as, as clear as I can to you, but, um, it, we won't need a budget amendment, it'll be figured in, so, if, I'm gonna try to explain this in the, in those accounting, uh, terms for a minute. So, when we do the budget every year, we'll take the past year's capital fund, uh, balance and whatever was over after the audit, okay, so after our audit, which we just had, um, once those funds that are in excess of that fifty percent balance, they'll be budgeted into the following year's capital project fund. Even though we may realize some of those funds earlier in the year, but just take that all aside, we need to wait till after the audit's done each year. So, they'll be budgeted into next year's fund, that money will also be, there'll be an expenditure on the other side of that journal entry of allocation of those capital project funds, may not be allocated to a specific project, but it'll be an allocation of those funds, so basically, what it does is gives rise for council and myself to spend those funds if needed for a capital project during that year. If they're not spent during that year, whatever portion's not spent, if a portion is spent, then that money will also roll over into the following year, but you gotta remember that fund balance is a, is a, can be a fluctuating number if it ever dropped below fifty percent, so the capital project fund, you may not have it one year, um, you may have it one year and you may not the next year, because if that number drops below fifty percent, it can be a fluctuating number, but after the audit every year, after that number is above fifty percent, it'll be allocated in the next budget year, as long as there's no budget shortfall is going into the next budget year that would require council to use some of that fund, or that, because if you're looking at fund balance, there's unassigned, assigned, and so forth, but as long as you didn't use any of that to make up a shortfall in revenue for some reason, then it'll just roll right back in and continue. I think the big things to pay, um, kind of attention to is it would be a one-year-behind type thing, so, that's, that's a, that's not, uh, speculating revenue, we know that is hard, hard numbers that we have, um, and so there should not be issues with, with that fifty percent falling behind. The other thing, if you look in section one, the allocation, so, this does give, uh, me as the administrator, uh, once that's figured into the budget, gives me the discretion to spend up to five percent of that aggregate amount annually, um, without, um, getting, um, a resolution or an ordinance to spend it. I'm not saying it's without county's, council's permission, uh, you guys all know that I keep you very informed on especially more larger expenditures, but it would allow us to, me, the ability to spend that money, uh, up to, let's say that we had a three million dollar balance, um, in that account going into next year, then I could spend up to a hundred and fifty thousand without us doing a resolution or an ordinance, anything aside from that would require resolution ordinance, um, or an ordinance to, uh, spend, um, and again, this is, if you look at section four, uh, this amendment just puts it in full force and effect, it doesn't change. and effect, it doesn't change, doesn't have to be voted on every budget year, it goes into full force and effect until such time council shows or chooses to repeal it through resolution ordinance, or I'm sorry, through an ordinance.
Well, at the end...
I make it clear as mode?
At the end of the day, the fund balance is supported by tax, can be supported by tax mileage. What you're talking about in 5 is leftover money.
That's correct, yes, sir. Yes, sir. And, and going into each budget cycle, Mr. Agee, you know, council does have the ability to use funds like this to not raise the mileage or whatever, so that, that's always council's discretion, but anything that was there, that council didn't use in that manner would go into this capital project fund, and just allow us to maybe take on another project or to supplement another project and so forth.
All right.
So, so one small piece of request I would have is the part about the 5%. If there was just a line in there that just said that the administrator would submit a report to, to council every time that money is spent, just kind of a part of the process kind of thing, so that in the future, you do do a really good job communicating with us, but in the future, if we didn't have someone communicating as well, we would know when that money gets spent and what it's for.
Yes, sir.
So we could just add that.
That's not a problem.
We have safety.
And to just make, I, I don't know if I was clear, that's an aggregate 5% per fiscal year, so it wouldn't, if I did three at one point, I couldn't do three more, or six more, or couldn't do six, but, so, understood.
Okay.
All right.
Okay, need a further discussion? Hear none, all in favor of 2024-5, raise your right hand and say aye.
Aye.
Bonds unanimous vote. Okay, we're gonna turn it back over to you, the administrator.
I'm gonna be brief, you guys heard that before, right? I did hold off on about five other ordinances that we were gonna look at, so we pushed those to the next meeting, I knew this one would be lengthy, so I'll try to be brief on my administrator's report. Just a couple of things that, there, there's two things on the beginning that I wanna just make council aware that we are working on. I don't know if you guys have noticed, but those of you that travel the bypass, but you notice that there might be less amount of signs and torn-up signs on the bypass, and so we're, we're undertaking a review, Mr. Leviser is, of our ordinance with regard to signs, especially temporary signs, make sure that those in the community are following the ordinance, because what I noticed happening, what others noticed happening in the department director, our department directors, is that we were starting to have a lot of signs that had just been beat, they were in the wrong place, they were in right-ofways, they're on easement, and it was starting to look really trashy, and so there's been a cleanup, not just going and taking those signs up, but actually going and talking to the business owners and those who put them out. Political signs are exempt from this during certain times of the years, when there's elections, obviously, and we have not messed with those signs, however, we have cleaned up a lot of the, the, you know, signs that were looking really bad. And we just ask that the public and businesses in our community, you know, make sure they understand what the zoning is for signs, the permit process for signs and temporary signs, and how long those can be up, because I think that it can lead to a situation where it makes an area that's heavily traveled in our community look really bad, and that reflects heavily on us as a community with people coming and going through those areas. So our attempt is to clean that up. The other thing that we're doing from a public work side is working with DOT to try to clean up the bypass and some of those little arterial roads and main roads off of that, the sidewalks, if you notice, the grass is growing over the sidewalks and into the road. Some businesses and homeowners take a really, you know, they take a pride in it and they edge it and keep it nice, but there's other areas where there's grass growing halfway into the right lane. And so our goal is to try and get that cleaned up as well. Mr. Hall is working with DOT, and if it comes down to it, we'll get an easement, we'll get access to the easement, and we'll clean it up ourselves if we have to, but we think that that area deserves a little bit of attention, and so it's our goal to get it cleaned up. We noticed that Highway 9 going all the way out to Richburg was looking a little bad, too. People throwing out trash, and as our, as Mr. Bonds is working on our litter ordinance is, I wouldn't throw trash out anymore, but we, you know, we just, we wanna clean that up and make that look nice, that's something we can be proud of. We've got beautiful land, beautiful roads, beautiful areas, people that take pride, and so we wanna make sure that it looks good. But that's a project we're working on, I just wanted to give you guys an update on. Capital Project Sales Tax, I'm not gonna steal Harold's thunder, he's got a big presentation tonight, but what I do wanna let you know that we submitted our first report to the state, our quarterly report, which was the DOR started to mandate, and, and that's our, our quarterly progress, our report on all our funds and our projects, and we came back with a, all is fine on our, our capital project sales tax money and our report. So just an update on that. Council, please don't forget, we have a Catawba Mental Health Board opening and a Workforce Development Board opening. My assistant, Ms. Calley Oliver, can send you information as to the requirements for those boards, but that's something that we need some recommendations on members to fill those two boards. I see there's a list tonight that we have already, but those are two others. The Airport Overlay was just passed, I'm sorry, a week ago tonight at the Lowry's Community Schoolhouse, and that went very well, it was very, very well attended. I would, I would say we, Mr. Leviser, we had over 100 people probably through the doors, which was really surprising. So we had, the COG was there, the Aeronautics Commission was there, the FAA, there was somebody from FAA, and they did a really nice job of explaining to the residents in that area what it meant, and while many people were skeptical and weren't sure where their land fell and how it was affected, I think at the end, when, as people left, they were comfortable with, with what was going on. And so the next step in that is Mr. Leviser's working with council and the Planning Commission to set up a workshop, and all that workshop's for is to just to remind everyone what this means, what's going on, kind of you to get the same information altogether as everyone who attended Airport Overlay. And so that way, it'll go to Planning Commission next, and then it'll come before council for votes. We wanna make sure everybody's educated on it fully and has all the knowledge that, that you guys need to make a informed decision. And then the last thing I got on my administrator's report, I know you can't believe it, but I would like, I always like to take the opportunity to recognize some of our staff for the really great things that they do and, and each and every week. And this week, my recognition goes to not just one person, but my Parks, Recreation, and Tourism Department, Mr. Studemire, he's in the back today as the director of that department, but his whole staff. If you guys attended the Tourism Fair, what an amazing event. It exceeded my expectations by far, and I think those of you, council members, that were able to get out there. Mr. Studemire, you haven't, did y'all ever get an idea of the count of people through there that day?
We're gonna, we're gonna check our cameras, we're gonna do the data.
Okay.
I think over 400.
I, I was gonna say it had to be in that range. I was there for probably, all the way up until a little after 5:00 that day, and it was a steady stream of people that were coming in there, and people really excited, really amazed, it was nice to have all the vendors, but what an outstanding event to bring everybody together from a tourism standpoint, and it was the first one. We had Roy Kostner from South Carolina Association of Counties, president, that spoke, said some really nice words about our county, what we were doing in tourism, and how far ahead of the curve we are compared to a lot of other counties that have a lot more. But we do have a lot to offer that I don't think people realize, and that's a really great thing. The website was unveiled, the tourism video was unveiled, I encourage everybody to go to our Parks, Recreation, Tourism website and just check it out for yourself if you weren't able to get out there, but what an amazing job, they put a lot of time in and effort in, and it was a success, they were very, it was just so professionally done. So thank you, Mr. Studemire, for, for what you and your team did, I appreciate it. Mr. Chairman, that concludes my administrator's report.
Thank you, sir, good information there, and you're talking about the litter, was it the county or was it the state that hired the contractor? I know they went down 321 and also outnumbered nine, the contractors, anybody know about that?
State.
State did that, I know they were doing a great job on that and really made it look good, so I appreciate the state for doing that. I know it wasn't the adopter highway people, and I didn't see any county employees out there, or, or either state employees, contractors. All right, moving along on to Old Business, would be the third reading of CCMA 23-17, Cabello Rapatupa, requests a tax map number 079-01-10-011-000, absolute, located behind 2051 AJ Cochrane Bypass, Chester, South Carolina, 29706, to be reviewed on, single-family residential, District RS1, to Journal Commercial District GC, Planning Commission voted 6 to 0 to approve.
I make a motion, we uphold the planning commission.
Second.
Got a motion, need a second?
Second.
Got a second from Mr. Wilson there, any discussion? Hear no discussion, all in favor of this being the third reading of CCMA 23-17, raise your right hand and say aye.
Aye.
Unanimous vote, Mr. Bonds voted in for it also. Okay, under B, on the Old Business, is update regarding capital project sales tax, project manager, Mr. Harold Hayes.
So we're gonna talk about the 2024 update on the capital sales tax project.
Mr. Hayes, let everybody get their copy sent.
Okay.
Mr. Hayes had a PowerPoint presentation.
Yes.
But because we have Mr. Bonds on Zoom, we're just gonna pass these out.
No, we're gonna do the PowerPoint presentation.
Oh, you're gonna still be able to see?
If he can just allow me to share my screen, I'm, I'm a part of the, the team's meeting, so I'm gonna share my screen. Okay. Let me go here.
Yep.
All right, so I'm gonna present to you the Capital Project Sales Tax 2024 update. As we all know, projects, according to the news reporter back on May 27, 2020, so those 53 projects reside in the municipalities of the county, as well as the Sheriff's Department and the school board. So on this slide, we're showing a pie chart that shows what percentage of projects are in each entity. So for example, we have the school board has two projects, that represents 4% of the CPST. You have the Chester Count, you have Chester County Government has 21 projects, and that represents 40% of the CTPST. Lowry's has one project that represents, take that out the way, that represents 2% of the CPT, CPST. Great Falls has four projects, that's 7%. Richburg has three projects, that's 6%. Fort Lawn has six projects, that's 11%. And the city of Chester has 12 projects, and that represents 23% together. That's where all of the CPST projects reside. So let's look a little closer at this, though. So for example, so on this slide, what I'm showing is the projects, the CTP, the CPST projects that are in the city of Chester. And so on the right, I have a pie chart. This pie chart is gonna tell us the percent complete, which will be in green, the percent, the percent started, which will be in yellow, and the percent not started, which will be in red. So to the left are all the projects that are under the, the city of Chester. So they have 58% of their projects that hasn't started. That's not good, and to assist and make sure that these projects get started, we're gonna send out a letter of intent to all of the municipalities that haven't started projects. But in moving on on this pie chart, they have 34% of their projects complete, and then they have 8% that have started. And when I talked about that letter of intent, this is a, this is a sample of the letter that we will be sending out to the municipalities that haven't started their projects, so that they can get the ball rolling and not lose the money that's been allocated for their Moving on to the county, the county has, as I said before, has 21 projects, 57% of their projects are complete, 43% have started. That looks healthy. As long as there's no red, then we're good. As long as the project's been started, that's great, and we have more green than yellow, so that, that's even better. That's the, that's the county. Moving on to the Sheriff's Department, they have four projects, 75% of them complete, 25% have started, so that's great, no red in there, so they won't receive a, a letter of intent. The schools, the school board, they have two projects, one has been completed and one hasn't started, but I think that one that hasn't started, which is the Chester School District Park Elementary School Bus, new cover, I think it's in the process of being started as, as we speak. So that will raise them, that will put them into the yellow and not be in the red. So, but yet it's still currently is red, so they will see, receive a letter of intent. Great Falls, they have three projects, 33% started, 34% complete, and 33% haven't started, so they will receive a letter of intent. Richburg has three projects, 67% of their projects are complete, and 33% have started, so that, that's good as well. Fort Lawn, Fort Lawn has six projects, 83% of their projects complete, 17% hasn't started. They will be receiving a letter of intent within the next couple of days to let us know how they're gonna use the funds, if they still need them, and if not, those project, those funds will go away. We want them to keep their funds so they can get the projects done. And then last but not least, we have Lowry's. Lowry's had one project, and it's complete, so, and that's good. That concludes the update, there any questions, we can get them answered.
Yes, are there any plans with the municipalities or organizations like the school board? Does the county have any plans, I don't know which one of y'all need to speak to, to possibly assist them in getting these projects complete, 'cause maybe, I'll just use the city of Chester for example, maybe they don't have a project manager or something of that nature that we have, like we have at the county, at our disposal to get some of this stuff complete, I don't know. But is there a plan in place to assist them in trying to get these projects complete? 'Cause I know the public would want these things done.
So, Mr. Guy, yeah, thank you, let me, let me just respond with three things. First, when Mr. Hayes talks about the letter that's being sent out, that's in response to the fact that all entities aside from Chester County Government that receive funds also signed an agreement that they would start or expend those funds by September 9th of this year, all right? And that was, we have those letters that, that they all agreed upon. So part of that, what Mr. Hayes is doing is following up the phone conversations that we've had with all of them as well, and so there has been phone conversations with anyone, well, I say anyone, the only one, Fort Lawn, I have not spoke to Fort Lawn. Mr. Hayes, you, you weren't able to get ahold of anybody?
No.
Okay, so, but we have followed up with all of those to remind them of that date as well, so that letter, we, we told them the letter was coming, don't be surprised by this letter, and then we had a phone conversation of what their intent was. So I'll just back up to Chester City, and then speaking to their city administrator, and if you look, a lot of those are, I think they've got 1, 2, 3, 4... And if you look, a lot of those are, I think they've got one, two, three, four generator projects, and then there's some, there's like a ramp at one of the stations. And so, I was assured by the city administrator that they are working on those and about to start some of those projects. They fully understand too, the fact that they need to encumber that money and start those projects by September ninth of this year.
So, as long as they start them by September ninth, they, they don't have to be complete?
Well, I, look, I think that's a fair approach for us, because technically, there's a whole another year and actually another, almost two years left on that. And I think that's a fair approach. If, when I say started, I don't mean we're just talking about them. I mean, they have to actually have started, encumbered some money, and there's a pathway forward. And that's up to Harold and I to evaluate as, as this project. We'll stay in touch with them going forward. If you go to, I wanted to point out a couple of things, and I'm just kinda looking down my list. The biggest one for us as a county, the defibrillators are actually all being put in, but county courthouse building improvements, that's actually, that's all underway. We have, some of those improvements have been done, just all the money has not been spent. The Rodman Sports Complex and Soccer Improvements, obviously, we all know where that's going or where that is, and the high mass lighting, that's all but done, really. We should, that one should be signed off here probably within the next month or so. Sheriff's Office, the sheriff's actually already completed all of his projects, but that body camera portion, the body and in car and interview cameras, that deal, we elected to pay that over a certain amount of years because the sheriff qualifies for grant monies that come back by paying that every year. If we, if we don't pay that full amount and we pay it on an annual basis, which Axon allows us to do. So, we're taking advantage of the monies that the sheriff is able to get through that grant by paying for it that way. So, technically, he's, he's completed. The school, I talked to Mr. Sutton Wednesday or Thursday last week.
Right.
They're starting, that is slated to start March first. The school district one, Great Falls, they're in the initial phases of the visitor's center. I have seen email conversations, I've been copied on them by the mayor down there with the engineering firm that they're using. The Republic Golf Course, that one's a little bit of a mystery to me. I'm not so sure, Mr. Vaughn, that's even the towns. I think that went to the Republic Golf Course itself, cuz I don't think the town owns it. Am I right?
I'm not aware of that one. I was surprised to see this. I'll have to do a little inquiry about that.
We, we were gonna do the same, but that one's a little, I've gotta pull the original documents on that one. Richburg, Richburg's technically done that department substation improvement, so there was three items, two were done, they're working on a drain, Mr. Agee, ain't that correct?
I, I have no earthly idea that anything's been done on.
On the drain, I know, but that, the drain was, and that project included three different things, the generator closing in an area and then the drain. The drain's the only thing that's not done. And I know that Mr. Mountain was, I think, gonna get some quotes.
Right.
Okay. And then Fort Lawn, we have not spoke to Fort Lawn on the Town Hall Foundation improvements at this time, Mr. Hayes will do that.
Yeah, we reached out to them this week.
Yep, so, that kinda, that's an update, but we, we, we have followed up with that. I, I, Mr. Hayes, if you guys didn't know, left for California to finish packing stuff up and get everything back here on late Thursday.
Right.
Literally flew back into Atlanta, almost didn't get back.
Right.
Um, because of the storms out there, drove back to get the council tonight. So, he's kind of in a whirlwind trying to get back.
Man, yeah, it was a pull through, but, I'm here.
Let me ask you a question, though.
Yes.
You asked it, was anything? I went back and pulled out all my records.
Okay.
And this is the original copy of the one percent.
Okay.
It has the signatures of everybody on it, except Ms. Jennings. And Mr. Coslar explained that there was a way around not going by the list. A list of a hundred, of whatever number of projects were, were one, two, three, four, five. But that was a way to do it because the county borrowed all the money on a bond.
Correct.
And that allowed them to do whatever. However, I have a document here signed by Mr. Williams, who happens to be in the back, dated January, January the, oh, maybe, hold on. Dated February the twentieth of twenty twenty.
Okay.
That the project to start for the Lewis Fire Station was supposed to begin on one one of twenty. And the amount of money allocated was seven hundred thousand dollars. That project is way over seven hundred thousand dollars now. And it was supposed to have started on January the first, twenty twenty. Who made those changes? I wanna know who changed the project list.
Well, the, the project list, so, so for example, if, if you look at the C P S T approved projects in priority order, that list is, doesn't necessarily represent the order in which a project would be, be done, but just the importance of the project.
I think if you ask these people that signed this document, they would not agree with you. But that's beside the point.
Okay.
What I'm really interested in, Mr. Williams signed a document, says the Lewis Fire Station was gonna start, be built on January the first, twenty twenty. This is twenty twenty four, four years later. The cost estimate of that has escalated.
Correct.
And we have, he just started digging dirt. So, we're four or five years behind with him signing this.
Mm-hmm.
I don't understand that. Somebody had to change it. I would like to know how that got changed and who did it and who's responsible for spending in excess of what was allocated, seven hundred thousand dollars.
Uh, as of now, I'm not privy of knowing who made those decisions. The prior administration more than likely did so. I know currently, we are at a point where we are making Lewis Fire Department a priority. That's why it's now starting, because it's been a long time. We, we definitely agree with that and we do understand that it's been, it should have been done back in twenty twenty. But a lot of times, availability, like you said, or someone made that decision to not make that so much of a priority. Who did that, I couldn't, I couldn't give you the name or say who done it, but we know now that it is a priority and we are currently getting that project rolling.
Number one project on the list.
And it still is.
And according to Ms. Cut, Mr. Coslar, there's no excuse for that not to have been done.
And then, you know, also, what probably could have happened, it could have been some site issues of the building, not, cuz the, the site is pretty, it's pretty tricky. It's not squares, kinda like a diamond triangle type. So, there are many things that could have led to, you know, getting that figured out. You know, sometimes you get something and you have to go back to the drawing board to kinda figure out, well, that's not gonna work. Then the site currently is not necessarily conducive to growth. You know, once we put the building there, the building's gonna be there, if we decide to add some more basic, it's gonna be challenging. So, it's kinda, the site is kinda constrained, so maybe those things could have caused the, the delay in the project. Try, maybe they were trying to find a better site, but I, like, again, I'm not privy nor who could have made those decisions, I'm just telling you some of the reasons why that could have happened.
Mr. Agee, if you don't mind, let me just step in for a minute. If you, if it's your wish that I track down and see if I can find who made what decisions and when they made them and why they made them, I can, but I can tell you that there's a couple of things, and I'm gonna read you a section out of what the document that you held up, cuz I do have that document with me. And I think, first of all, any project that was approved in twenty twenty in the middle of COVID, I think you said February of twenty twenty, is that correct? So.
Well, that, that's, that's almost four years ago.
So, let me, so again, when, beginning of COVID, I don't think anything that was budgeted and the price of materials is the same as it was in February twenty twenty. And then you gotta go back to a year or two when those, when these projects were all budgeted, and I think every single one of our major capital project, sales tax projects was under budgeted. I don't, we can all agree on that today and that COVID prices sent those up. So, from a budgetary standpoint, and council recognized that somewhere between twenty twenty and somewhere between twenty twenty three, when I arrived on scene and allocated more money to each and every project that was under budget. So, I, I would, I would ask that you accept that as an answer for the budget issue? From a standpoint of who made decisions, I can tell you that the ordinance gives, gives leeway, and even if, let's, let's just say that from a standpoint of priority, that you're right, we follow that priority list the way it is. The way the ordinance is written is that it must be expended for the purposes listed in the priority list. However, the completion of each project funded by sales tax is governed by a whole separate code and is subject to acquisition, property rights, design, engineering considerations, funding of the project from other sources, which most of these are. It also goes into bids and excess estimates, availability of materials, cost of runs, financing, exhaustion of different, it, it, basically, it goes on to say that it gives you the list of, if you run into problems with projects or there's disagreements on projects or whatever, that you don't stop dead in your tracks with the projects and you keep moving. Because let's face it, if we did that, we'd be in a heap of hurt right now from, from these projects. Because some of these projects, just from a planning standpoint, no, not, not any of council's fault, but it needed more work.
I'm not arguing the point, I'm just making the.
So, I, I guess what I'm asking is if you want us to expend the time to go back through those documents, find out.
I want to know who made the decision.
We'll attempt to, but I can't.
Cuz if somebody's responsible for the excess expenditure of funds, in my opinion. Mr. Williams could have built that station, he said it right there years ago and said, when Mr. Lutes and Ms. Jennings and those sat right there, wherever they were, and, and they gave him seven hundred thousand dollars to build that building. And he said, and I quote, "I can build that building for four hundred thousand dollars." "It's a red iron building, we don't have to go through all this engineering, cuz it's a pre-engineered building." So, now we in excess of eight hundred thousand. So, I think somebody has to be held accountable for the expenditure of money, not you. I think you're doing a good job, I don't have any issues with it.
Sir.
I think you're doing a good job. But somebody, somewhere needs to know, the citizens of this community need to know who caused that escalation in cost. And it could have, it could have been done for four hundred thousand dollars while we built it. This is a three thousand square foot metal building, red iron, with one bathroom and I like to tease him about one light. So, the fire chief at Fort Lawn got a two million dollar grant from the state of South Carolina, and that building's just about finished, and it didn't start until about three months ago. So, somewhere along the line, something, the wheel has come off the cart on this, and I would like to know who that is.
He can't tell you on that, you say that paper, he got the man signing, he, he signed that bill, he should know who brought that to you. He should know that, but Mr. Hayes, not him at the time, and, and I know he funded him, but you gotta find out who signed it. Somebody had to sign it, you say what that man name?
Jay Williams signed it in twenty twenty.
You don't know who done this? Know who, you know, you signed it? So, who made this proposal that it was what, seven hundred thousand, who?
They asked me to put it together, and I did.
You did?
I wrote it to the committee. The committee signed off on it. We were the only ones, and then all of a sudden it disappeared.
Well, I gotta tell you, somebody getting some kickback, if you ask me.
Uh, 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 all I, all I want is, is I think, I think it's no secret that, you know, we've, we've had our challenges, Chester County's had our challenges with, you know, with administrators and having administrators fill in and, and things of that nature. We all know that we've had those issues, and, and I would say that that's probably a part of it, of the issues we've had in the past, abruptly having to get rid of county managers and having county managers step in that maybe was not necessarily, you know, they had to abruptly stepped, stepped in and had a lot to cover and learn at that, at that point. And I would say that, that probably slowed the process down. I, I don't think it's a, a mystery at all, what we've gone through. And I, I would, I would think that that has a lot to do with what happened in the past. What I am comfortable with and what I do like now is that we have a capable administrator, a capable project manager, capable directors all throughout, and I'm proud of what we have in Chester County right now. So, thank you for making that a priority and everything else that we're doing in the county. Well, that's, that's, my, my stance is, let's go from here. I agree with Mr. Agee, we, we probably need to find out what happened, but I, I don't think it's a mystery as to what could have caused this with everything we've gone through as far as county managers in those times.
Yeah, I'll agree with you, Mr. Guy, on that and agreeing that we shouldn't spend as much energy as looking backwards as what we should in getting, in going forward with the process and getting this project done. I mean, what was done in the past is done and that's water over the dam, and we're not gonna correct that. I mean, hopefully, we've corrected through the, the jobs and people we have on board now that's handling these and that, I, I think we need to spend our energy in getting this building, this fire station built at the cheapest price we possibly can and moving forward with it. And thank you for your work.
You're welcome.
Mr. Pete wanted to say something.
Hold on, I was just gonna say, I wanted to highlight three of the projects that, that I see pretty often. One of them was the West Chester Fire Department Breathing Air System. I had firefighters tell me, volunteer firefighters tell me how important that was to their, to their department and to that part of the county. So, that was really a, you changed the page, I mean, there.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So, that was, no, you're good. So, that was a really good project that is, is already paying dividends. Another project is the Lowry's Park, the playground improvements, that's complete. If it's a pretty day, I see dozens of people out there, the place fills up, and it's really, really good to see those kids out there enjoying that. The, the playground they installed is really quality playground equipment. It was money from this, from the C P S T in addition to money from the town. So, put the two together, it's a really quality project that people enjoy. And then the third one, which really means a lot to me, my son goes to A T L, is the multi, multi-purpose facility there at A T L. And I would just encourage folks from the public to ride by there and see it. They, they built a G M, a multi-purpose building, they used five hundred thousand dollars from the C P S T money and added a lot of money of their, of their own money, I think roughly seven hundred thousand dollars to that five hundred thousand to complete a really, really nice building. And I know several council members have, have seen it and been in it, and it's really something to see. Just want the public to know that, that these monies are making a difference, and, and I'm very, very pleased with what I've seen come out of them. So, thank you, and thank you for the update tonight.
You're welcome.
And let me just add this too as well to follow up on Pete, because my daughter goes to A T L as well. That project was approved in twenty twenty, they started, I believe, in March or April of twenty twenty two, and it was completed by October, November of twenty twenty two. We had our first Christmas event there in twenty twenty two. So, now we've, that's how, that's how fast they got it done, so kudos to them as well.
We'll, we'll note those contractors and, and get them more involved in our projects.
Yeah, and almost every, every single day that school's in session, there are kids using that building, enjoying it, learning, playing, being active. So, I mean, it's just really, if it wasn't for the C P S T, I don't think that project would be done yet.
Right.
They'd still be trying to get the money together. So, so this made that possible and it's getting used every single day by kids of our community. So, that's pretty cool.
And I like, we got the right people, like Mr. Gass, we got Mr. Hester, we got Mr. Hayes, we got people in position that's doing things for Chester, and we gotta put our trust in them, so they can make the right decision, and I'm, I'm proud of y'all for doing that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, I think, I think the important thing from Mr. Hayes's presentation is, look at how many projects are complete or started and almost complete. We were well ahead of the curve, and I don't think the community realizes that, and, you know, we try to, we try to make a big deal as these projects are completed, and. And, you know, when you've got 53 projects, there's always gonna be budget, there's always gonna be some that are over or under budget. That's how, that's how this process works. That's why there's a process for funds to roll into another project. And they might not get started on time. And I just, you know, there's two things I'll say to end is, this, this county, when I came here, had no one in charge of projects. So the really, the only person you blame is the person, is the, like Mr. Guy said, the administrator, the supervisor, whoever. There wasn't a project manager. When I came in and I said, well, who's in charge of that project? I had five people in a room looking at each other, and people did little bits and pieces, but no one was really in charge. And if you don't have someone in charge, things are not gonna, things will get missed. And that's what I urge. And I think what's important is, we show this community that we are being wise with that capital project sales tax, because we, as a rural community, we rely on that penny tax and the projects that it can bring to every area of this county. That is a must. And if we show them that we're responsible and that we're doing a good job, and we get these reports, and Mr. Hayes is on top of it, and we're spending that money, then when it comes time to vote that thing back in again, they'll be behind us. And I think that's what's important.
Right.
I would agree with Mr. Hester. I think that we need to all remember the 2014 CPST. There were some major problems with that, that cycle, and I think we learned from it. I would say that now the county is managing much improved from what we were in that last cycle. Is it perfect? No, it's not. It's trying to figure out how to get a accurate cost for projects seems like to be the, the hardest thing, especially when you have things like COVID popping up. So I think if the public's listening to this discussion, they should remember all of this and, and really appreciate that we've got Mr. Hayes and the, the good job that Mr. Hester and this council is doing at managing these, these funds and making this a good cycle, and hopefully we'll have another good cycle after this one.
Well, Mr. Vaughn, you're absolutely right, and I agree with you 100%. The problem is, I want the citizens to know that our money is being managed correctly because they're going to be asked to vote on another one cent sales tax soon. And if we don't be truthful with them and we not transparent, that is not going to pass.
We, we're being very transparent. As you can see, we're, we're calling out where our failures are and where our, where our wins are. So we, we would be very transparent with the community about what it is that we're doing.
Well, I, thank you for that, and I'll have to agree with Mr. Hester. We way ahead of the curve on these things, and, and I like to thank the citizens of Chester County for voting this in, you know? And if we voted it in twice, then hopefully we can go for a third time, because anybody in the county can look around and see the improvements that we made would have been totally impossible without this money. So we would, so I think that it's a bit of success. A lot of the things are yet to be done, but Mr. Hester said he thinks that we are way ahead of the curve on this, and I'll have to agree with it. All righty. Thank you for that information, and we take that as information now.
All right.
Thanks, sir.
You're welcome.
All right, moving along to the new business. Come from the CTC agenda on the 9A and B.
Did we lose Mike Vaughn? Did we lose Mr. Vaughn?
I don't know. I don't know whether he hit the button that David and Mr. Vaughn's not up anymore, you know what's going on there.
He just walked out.
Okay, moving along to, for the, from the CTC meeting, approval for reimbursement of $30,366.41 for roadside material and road, from the road to the road department. Need a motion on that.
That's a, that's a consent, A and B.
Yeah, consent, consent A, we'll take both of these in, in one vote then.
Yes, sir.
All right. And also for the, the contract to be given to Plaidburger for the $1,532,460.78. Need a motion on both of those.
I move that we approve the consent agenda for items 9A and 9B.
All right, need a second?
Second.
Got a motion and a second, any discussion? Here, none? All in favor, raise your right hand and say aye?
Aye.
Aye. All except Mr. Vaughn, and I don't know what happened there. So unanimous here. Okay. For the consideration of a bond for the Woodhaven Plan Development District for Village Drive, it's got Mr. Carslark, so someone gonna speak to that?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, we, we've reviewed the form of the bond, and it, it's a compliant form of bond. It meets the requirement of being one and a half times the construction cost and appears compliant from that perspective. Obviously, we wouldn't be able to weigh in on the accuracy of the, the cost estimates there, but as far as the bond's concerned, it appears compliant.
All right. Any action, Mr. Hester, need to be taking on that?
Say that again, sir.
As far as to see the consideration of bond for Woodhaven Plan Development District and Village Drive, is it, we need to take any action on that?
Hang on just a second, Mr. Marshall. Mr. Moser's looking.
Yes.
I believe we do. I think we'll defer to our colleague here.
Yeah. You want to speak to that, Mr. Levisson?
Sir, basically, the land development requires, when you get, before you get approval from final plat for plan development, you have to present the bond as, like he said, one and a half times the percent of the infrastructure of that project to be presented to the county attorney. County attorney makes a recommendation to the county council, and the county council votes and approves it. And once it's approved, then they can proceed with the final plat process.
So that, y'all have approved that bond consideration, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
So we need to vote on accepting that?
Yes, you do.
All right. I make a motion to accept the bond recommendation of the Carslark Law Firm.
Second.
In a second?
Second.
And further discussion?
So I do have a question. I'm not sure, it might be for Mr. Levisson, it might be for y'all. But what is the timing of approving this bond? Is it, is it done before they can apply for building permits or, because we already see work going on out there at that place?
Yeah, I'm gonna defer to Mr. Levisson on that, if you want to speak to the actual, what's happening with the boots on the ground as opposed to the legal review of the bond.
So, good evening, council. I forgot to address you last time. But basically, to answer Pete's question, that is basically degrading and getting erosion put in place before they can do any construction, it has to have the final plat process with the county, and then before the, the first permit, as the stuff that I presented to Brian today, they gotta pay $100,000 upfront lump sum before we issue the first permit. That was the project agreement with the county.
So should have we done this before they actually began grading?
No, sir, not, it's not the requirements the process is, is you have to have that bond before the final plat process is approved by the planning commission.
They're, they're allowed to grade before the plat process is approved?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Now, we, if you wanna make that, we can make some changes.
Maybe I need a better understanding of that, because seems a little, little ahead of, of themselves sometimes if the plat approval hasn't been, hasn't taken place yet.
Okay.
That's just new to me. I just didn't quite realize that would be the case.
Correct. That's on every project that we've approved so far.
All right. Any further discussion? Here, none? All in favor of the consideration of the bond for the Woodhaven Plan Development? Raise your right hand and say aye?
Aye.
Mr. Vaughn? Mr. Vaughn? He must have something seemed like it's gone silent again. It froze up.
He, he's having internet connections.
Yeah, probably, so all, this is the part that's, I say unanimous. Okay. The moving along D was eliminated from the agenda, so we move to E, which would be the first reading of CCMA 24-01. Crystal and Michael Connor request a text map number 079-04-02-098-000, located at 461 Lancaster Highway, Chester, South Carolina 29706, to be rezoned from single-family resident district RS1 to general commercial district GC. Planning Commission voted six to zero to approve. Contingent on the closing of the property must be by April the 1st, 2024. If property is not closed by April the 1st, 24, 2024, the zoning would revert back to Need a motion on that for the first reading?
I move that we approve the first reading of CCMA 24-01 with the, with the clause as provided by the planning commission.
Second.
Second. Got a motion and a second, any discussion?
Where is 641 Lancaster Highway?
That's.
Do I need to wait until you offer?
Mr. Brannan?
Since you're the property owner, if you would come.
Um, this might sound like a stupid question, I don't know, but I don't think there are any dumb questions. My name is Brandy Henson, and we're the property owner at 641 Lancaster Highway. Since the reverter clause was approved, does that mean on April the 1st, the property will revert back to residential if it's not sold by that date with no other process? Or would it have some type of process that it would have to go through? If it would, if it would go through the process and be approved, then for some reason, like I said, I believe they're going to buy this property. I believe they have every intention of buying it, but I know that things happen beyond people's control sometimes. Say something beyond their control happened and they couldn't buy it, not, I mean, just because, say death or something. I mean, I hate to even say that in front of everybody, but I mean, that, things like that can happen. If something like that were to happen, my family needs somewhere to live. So that's where my mind is at.
So that, that's an automatic reverter.
Okay, so there would be no other process that it would have to go through?
It would automatically revert back to, to what it was.
Okay.
So that is a very tight window, April 1st, so.
That's what I would like to ask Mr. Levisson on, why was that window so small on that?
It was done that way because March the 5th is the date that we're meeting in the attorney's office to do the closing papers. March the 4th is the last meeting. So after the last meeting, we're gonna, we, we have an appointment in the, in Mike Bryce's office, March the 5th, to sign the final papers. So we should be signing everything that day.
Okay. And just for council's information, that's a house after you turn, if you go from here up to the, up the bypass to Highway 9, take a right, and the house is just down on the left before you get to Fernwood and York Tech and all that, and it kind of sits back on five acres, right? Sits back off the road a little bit there.
It does. It'll actually be.
That's right there beside Michael, Michael DeFireman.
Worked for the CDL Chelsea.
Oh, I know who you're talking about.
That's who you're talking about.
Michael Frank.
I know who you're talking about.
Yeah. Um, is that, is that supposed to be 20 acres? Because they're buying both parcels. They're buying the 5 and the 15 behind it. So.
Okay. That's right. I remember that.
So this is beside the corn laundry place?
Right.
Yeah. Thank y'all for your time.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
For that information.
So, Mr. Brannan, we kind of got jumbled around here a little bit, but if you want to wait to discussion, the purchaser of the property, hang on just a minute, we'll see what order Mr. Brannan decides to go in, but Ms. Crystal, that's what I know her by, is here, her and her husband are purchasing a property for a business. So if you want a discussion, they can help you there, too.
Do you see any problem with making that date? Okay, well, you don't see any problem making that, that April the 1st date, I think we should go ahead and vote on it, don't you? Any more discussion?
You gotta have a motion and a second.
Yeah, we got the motion. Did we have a motion and a second? Yeah, we did get that motion and a second on that. So all in favor of the first reading of CCMA 24-1? Raise your right hand and say aye?
Aye.
All right. Unanimous vote on that. Can you hear us, Mr. Vaughn? Okay. You vote for it, okay. So that's good. All right. Moving on to F on the first reading of CCMA 24-02. Trent Irving of, for EP Group LLC, request text map number 079-04-04-008-000, located at 614 Fernwood Drive, Chester, South Carolina 29706, to be rezoned from single-family residential district RS1 to general residential district RG2. Planning Commission voted six to zero to deny.
I make a motion that we uphold the planning commission and deny this reading in this neighborhood for this change.
Second.
You got a second? Any discussion, comments? Okay. No, here no more. All in favor of the denying, for the denial of this reading of CCMA 24-2? Raise your right hand and say aye?
Aye.
Unanimous vote, Mr. Vaughn voted also. Okay. A reading for G, first reading of CCMA 24-03. Trent Irving for EP Group LLC, request text map number 079-04-04-027-000, located at 620 Fernwood Drive, Chester, South Carolina 29706, to be rezoned from single-family residential district RS1 to general residential district RG2. Planning Commission voted six to zero to deny. Need a motion?
I make a motion that we uphold the planning commission on CCMA 24-03.
Okay, give a second?
Second.
Got a motion and a second, any discussion?
Yes. Reason why, I just want to discuss the fact that I'm upholding this vote, because in that neighborhood, there are not any houses, I don't, to my knowledge, there are not any manufactured houses in that neighborhood. And I think what the, what this guy needs to do, if he's thinking about purchasing his property, is first off, put, get the property in condition to handle the water drainage, and second off, he maybe needs to consider doing some stick-built homes in there and maybe use two lots at a time instead of just one lot stuffed, because the lots are too small, and maybe combine two lots and build two houses there instead of trying to put four manufactured homes. That's just my point of mind.
And that's the place they tried to put trailers?
Yes, sir.
And I will say.
With the thumb out?
Yeah. And I will say, I took a roads tour today. I went, all my complaints I've had over the last few weeks, I went today and just rode around the county, and I went through there as well. So I, I know exactly what you're talking about there, so I completely agree there.
Any further discussion, comments? Here, none? All in favor of denying CCMA 24-3? Raise your right hand and say aye?
Aye.
Unanimous vote, Mr. Vaughn voted also. Okay. On the H, first reading of CCMA 24-4. Trent Irving for EP Group LLC, request text map number 079-04-04-028-000, located at 622 Fernwood Drive, Chester, South Carolina 29706, to be rezoned from single-family residential district RS1 to general residential district RG2. Planning Commission voted six to zero to deny. Need a motion on that?
I make a motion that we uphold the planning commission.
Second.
Got a motion and a second, any discussion? Here, no discussion? All raise your right hand and say aye?
Aye.
All right. First reading of CCMA 24-5. Trent Irving for EP Group LLC, request text map number 079-04-04-029-000, located at 624 Fernwood Drive, Chester, South Carolina 29706, to be rezoned from single-family residential district RS1 to general residential district RG2. Planning Commission voted six to zero to deny. Need a motion on that?
I make a motion to deny CCMA 24-05.
Second.
Got a motion and a second, any discussion? Here, no discussion? Got a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hear no discussion? The motion is deny CCMA 24-5. All in favor of denial? Raise your right hand and say aye?
Aye.
Okay. All right. Boards and commissions, to accept the resignation from Ellis Fan's zoning board of appeals, Mr. Killian?
I want to make that motion to accept the resignation of Ms. Ellis Fan off the zoning board of appeals.
All right. You got a motion? Get a second?
Second.
Second. Any discussion? Hear none? All in favor of Mr. Killian's request? Raise your right hand and say aye?
Aye.
Unanimous vote. Okay. Under B, the appointment of Pete Skidmore to the zoning bill of the boards, Councilman Killian.
I want to make that motion to appoint Pete Skidmore to the zoning board of appeals.
I'll second.
Second. Got a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hear none? All in favor of appointing Mr. Pete Skidmore to the planning board's deal? Raise your right hand and say aye?
Aye.
Unanimous vote. Okay. Appoint Israel Bunning of the planning commission, Councilman Guy.
Yes, Chairman. I'd like to make a motion to appoint Reverend Israel Bunting to the planning commission.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hear no discussion? All in favor of appointing Mr. Israel Bunning to the planning commission? Raise your right hand and say aye?
Aye.
Unanimous vote. Under D, appointment, appoint William Clark to the tax assessment board, Mr. Guy.
Yes, Chairman. I'd like to make a motion to appoint Dr. William Clark to the tax assessment board.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any question? Any discussion? Hear none? All in favor of Mr. William Clark to the tax assessment board? Raise your right hand and say aye?
Aye.
Unanimous vote. Mr. Vaughn is voting there. I can't hear him, but I can see him. Appoint John Faulkner to the radio advisory committee board.
I make a motion we appoint John Faulkner to the radio advisory committee board.
I'll second that.
Got a motion and a second. Any comment or questions on that?
He's the director of EMS?
Deputy.
Deputy director. Deputy director of EMS.
All right. Good. All in favor, raise your right hand and say aye?
Aye.
Good. Okay. Appoint Mary Hall to the Land O' Fire Protection District.
Yes, Ms. Hall is just recently retired. She's self-employed in Rock Hill, had her own business. And she lives in Edgemore. I can't remember. My brain just went dead. The lady resigned several weeks ago, a couple of months ago in the fire board. This recommendation for Ms. Hall came from the fire board of the Land O' Fire Department. And I would like to make that motion to appoint Ms. Hall.
Second.
I'll second on that. Any discussion? Hear no discussion? All in favor of appointing Ms. Mary Hall for the Land O' Fire Department District? Raise your right hand and say aye?
Aye.
Unanimous vote. All right, executive, executive session. I need a motion to go in executive session to discuss economic development, man of project 2373. The B to receive legal advice regarding CWR has been stricken from the agenda. And C to receive legal advice regarding...
Stop. I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman. I'm sorry. B is not stricken from the agenda.
Which one was?
That was back, old business or new business, 9D.
I was thinking...
That's correct. All of executive session items are still on.
Everything in executive session?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Sorry.
I apologize for that. I got ahead of myself on that. Okay. So B is to receive legal advice regarding the CWR and C to receive legal advice regarding solar panels. And D is to receive legal advice regarding Great Falls Fire Department. And E is to discuss the personnel matter for clerk to counsel, to discuss the matter of hiring a clerk to counsel that. I need a motion to go in executive session.
How much should we go into executive session?
All right. We're in executive session.
I'll second that motion.
I need to make a statement.
Okay. Go ahead then, Mr. Vaughn.
I own the building that the Chester Water Sewer District has their main office in. I have had consultations with three different lawyers. I asked Mr. Hester to have the county attorney render an opinion. I've had my own personal lawyer and a lawyer that represents a business that I own. I have an inherent conflict of interest. I therefore am reclusive myself from the vote on this project.
So we did take...
Need a vote still?
Motion to go in executive session, right? All invited to vote. So we...